Please stand while Mr. George Webb leaves us in the prayer and the pledge. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your love and your mercy. Lord, we thank you for this time that we can just gather together, Lord, to better the education in Madison County for our young people. Lord, now we ask blessings upon this meeting as we go through it, Lord, if the wisdom is needed for making good decisions. Lord, now we ask forgiveness where we fell, you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the March eighteenth School Board meeting. We have one amendment to the agenda under items for individual consideration, five point two, the fish report, Mr. Gin. Any comments, public comments? The sunshine law requires that the school board meet and perform its duties in public. This meeting in public is an opportunity for the board to discuss and make decisions around its slated agenda. Citizens have the right to observe the meeting and hear all comments made by the board members. School board meetings, however, are not a meeting of the public, an opportunity for the public to comment during meetings. On behalf of my fellow board members, at this time, I would like to invite and encourage members of the audience to sign up regarding district issues. Please begin by stating your name. You will be limited to three minutes. This is your three minutes. The clock will not be stopped until your three minutes are completed. We will not be acting on the issues tonight unless they are part of the agenda. If you have a question, we'll refer you to the proper person. Renee Dempsey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm actually coming on behalf of our Madison County Boys Basketball Team. As you know, they were one A district state champions. And of course, with that title comes rings. And we were, in the short amount of time, trying to brainstorm ideas to get the monies to get the boys rings. A lot of them are graduating in May. So we were trying to raise monies to get the rings for the May banquet. I don't think it'll be back in time, so we'll have to do a special ring ceremony for them. But I just wanted to hand out to the board members a flyer that I put together. What we're trying to do is get sponsors for each player. If anyone would be interested in sponsoring, we priced the rings and they're running at $2.39 per student athlete. And I have with me a copy of the flyer as well as our roster. If anyone on the board is interested in sponsoring one of our athletes, we would greatly appreciate it, or even your church, if you wanted to take one along. We have some churches who have members. One of the St. James, for instance, is going to sponsor their church member, Chris Simmons. So if there's anybody that you're interested in sponsoring, or if you can get your church to sponsor, we would greatly appreciate it. We're at a crunch for time as far as other fundraisers, and then we got the other sports that are jumping in and doing fundraising. So if y'all don't mind, I wanted to hand these out. And if you can spread the word for us, we would greatly appreciate it. Our basketball players weren't able to be here tonight, but we would at a future meeting. If y'all wanted to acknowledge them, I can get my husband to work on getting them up here with the trophy and all.
Thank you, Mrs. Dempsey.
Thank y'all.
And we are proud of the basketball team. You might want to set some back on the table there. Thank you. Four point two consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent items.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms. Williamson to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor. Oppose. Becky, five zero. Five items for individual consideration, five point one, out of district field trips. Dr. Pickles.
As I previously told you, there are four out of county trips, one for Lee, one for Greenville, and two for the high school. And I do ask for your approval.
I make the motion for the out of district field trips.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Mr. Daniels to approve the out of district field trips. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor. Oppose. Becky, five zero. Five point two fish report, Mr. Gin.
In front of you, you've got this year's fish report. They, we made some adjustments to it. We, after we got to look in, after the high school was renovated, we, there was some, what those student stations, it was just square footage for different purposes of rooms. And what the student station stayed the same. So pretty much, it's the same as it's always been. We didn't change any of the footprint of the high school. We went with the square footage that was the same, but it was just delegated to different usage throughout school. But this is, as far as I know, this is the correct square footage for the high school. All the rest of the schools are the same as they've always been. So that's what we at right now. I recommend your approval on that.
Is there a motion to approve the fish report?
I make the motion to approve the fish report.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred to approve the fish report, second by Ms. Dan, Mr. Daniels. Any discussion or questions? Let me ask you something, Mr. Gin. Does this involve the annex?
The annex does not consider any student stations involved in that. The square footage is in that fish report.
Okay.
But as far as student stations or educational, is, there's nothing, anything to do with the county office or the annex.
Okay, thank you. By a show of hands, all in favor. Oppose. Becky, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gin. Five point, five point three, summer school 2019, Dr. Pickles.
I have Ms. Roderick here, and she will present it. And then Ms. Hill is also here, and then Mr. Stalnacker. We all had a summer school planning meeting.
Good evening. You should have in front of you the summer school proposal.
Where?
It's online. There's a narrative, which is the proposal.
Just like in years past, we will be having the third grade summer reading camp. It's required by DOE for students who don't meet the promotion criteria based on the FSA or a concordant score. Based off of our I-Ready results at this current time, we are planning to have seven third grade summer reading camp teachers. We also will be providing extended school year services for students with disabilities who qualify. And then we'll have our migrant program that is funded out of Title I Part D funds, Part C, I'm sorry. We'll have driver's ed as we normally do. And you know, that's paid for out of a special fund that we get from the county for teaching driver's ed. We're looking at using roll forward money from Title I to help pay for summer school. We'll have to use some of our reading allocation also, and some of our IDA funds for the extended school year. But food service will be able to pay for the folks that are working in the cafeteria. And then SAI will be able to pay for the transportation for the buses.
Any questions for Ms. Hill?
So what, what total number of children are you looking at for the summer reading? You said anticipate nine teachers.
Well, seven teachers for the third grade summer reading camp, I think. Let me look back at that. The, the numbers that we could come up with, we were looking at an average of about ten students per class. So about seventy students is what we think we'll, we'll need to serve.
Now, that's all depending on the I-Ready scores, right?
Well, the FSA and I-Ready.
So both.
There, the, there's an I-Ready score that can be used as a concordant score.
Okay.
And if the students, you know, score, if they don't score high enough on the FSA, they get a level one, but they score high enough on the spring I-Ready, then they can be exempted from third grade summer reading camp. We'll also give the Stanford ten, and if they can score above the fortieth percentile on the Stanford ten, at the beginning of summer reading camp, they can exempt out. So they have, they have a couple of different opportunities. If they've completed their third grade portfolio to show mastery, then we could also use that. But according to the, the schools right now, there, there's not any on track to have completed that so far.
And this will take place at the high school?
We are looking at doing this at the high school to give the central school a chance to get some, some deep cleaning and stuff done. We appreciate that the high school was willing to, to host it. And so we're gonna, whatever we need, we'll move from the central school to the high school, you know, for the, the summer school. Food service said they could work that out. And so I, I think that'll be a good opportunity for Central to, to get a lot of work done.
Is there a motion to approve summer school 2019?
I make the motion to approve summer school 2019.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms., was it Ms. Bell?
Williamson.
Ms. Williamson to approve summer school 2019. Any questions or discussion?
I just request in the future, the last time I looked at my board docs, this was not on here. I don't know when it was placed, but I just asked that it be placed in a timely manner where, I mean, I don't know when it was placed. This is the first, this is the first I'm seeing it tonight, and I had been looking at the board docs.
Board members need time to study and look and examine. You're right.
Well, in the future, I asked that it be before the day of the meeting, please.
Because let's remember, we have three board members that have full-time jobs. Thank you. By a show of hands, all in favor. Oppose. Becky, five zero. All right. Five point four, approval of payment for Madison County High School Girls Varsity Basketball Coaching Supplement. Dr. Pickles.
You have two letters from Ms. Wild Goose. You approved these as coaches. They have now fulfilled their duties. So you approved them to be the coaches back in September, actually, it was September seventeenth. So this is now asking for their final payment to be made. They are not staff, they are community members. So I do ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve payment of Madison County High School Girls Varsity Basketball Coaching Supplement?
Chairman Chair, I move to approve the payment of the supplement.
We have a motion by Mr. Daniels, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell to approve a payment for the Madison County High School Girls Varsity Basketball Coaching Supplement. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor. Oppose. Becky, five zero. Five point five, recommendations from long-term planning committee. Dr. Pickles.
Actually, Mr. Williams is going to present, and Mr. Pastor Justice.
I would like to take just a few moments, if I can, to invite all of our committee members to stand so that they can be recognized for their efforts in this process. Thank you for, each of you for working along with us to ensure that this process would be a process with equity, as far as a process that would keep the whole district in mind relative to our current condition. Just so that you can understand a little bit about the process we actually undertook to get to this, we decided early on that we would not have a series of motions and seconds to get to our results. We chose to use a consensus building model. The consensus building model is simply that we wanted to get everybody to the place where they could at least agree that we were all in the same place as far as the recommendations are concerned. And it's a short three, three-step process. All of those who would be in favor of whatever was being discussed would give us a thumbs up. Those who could live with it, may not be what they want, but they could still live with it, they would give us a thumb sideways. And those who were just dead set against anything that we were discussing, they had to give us a thumbs down with one caveat, and that caveat was that they had to recommend additional solutions that would get them to the point where they were either living with it or, or could readily approve of it. And after resourcing and after brainstorming about the different recommendations that were in the room, we came up with a total of sixty-four recommendations, all total, sixty-four. They were all very good recommendations. However, we felt we could not bring to this board sixty-four different recommendations. And so we chose to use a process to bring that down to about six or seven hard recommendations which you have before you. How did we get to that process? We took the sixty-four, and we asked all of the people that were on the committee to choose at least two, at least two, in each one of the sixty-four, that they could just group into headings. The first thing we did, if I may, just a digressive moment, was we decided to look at all the sixty-four, and then we took them and compiled them into the six headings that you now see on the document. Because all of them, again, have value, but we didn't want to have a lot of redundancy about it. So we condensed those to six particular headings. And then we were able to reduce the recommendations down to thirty-two. We cut them in half with the first, with the first condensing. And then we got them down to actually about fourteen after three condensing processes. One of the headings you do not see here is the one that dealt with FTE and student tracking. We felt that you all could, you all could really deal with that in a manner, and the district should be able to deal with that. And so of those seven, we chose six. And the six we have before you are the ones that we come tonight making recommendations to you. It was very understood during this process that nobody was here to advocate for any one position, that even if you had a pet peeve, all options were on the table. That means everything that came out of the fiscal study and all of the recommendations that they brought individually. That's how you got the sixty-four recommendations. And we would not have anybody who was advocating for either just one position and just kind of dealt with that and didn't want to deal with anything else. We felt that we had to work in such a way that we could present to you all recommendations that would benefit the whole district, and that would be something that you all could study and look at in terms of helping us to evaluate our current fiscal situation and, and going forward from, from that. And so utilizing that particular process, we came up these six particular headings. I'm going to discuss with you the restructure and the reconfiguration. Brother Justice is going to talk with you about transportation and staffing. I'll talk to you about administrative costs and allocation of resources. And Ms. Brittany Brown, who is one of our committee members, who is very familiar with the acts of VPK and how that fund and all roles, she's going to express to you the committee's thinking as far as VPK is concerned. Please note that these are just what they are, recommendations. We felt very strongly of trying to how to try to tell the board how to do it, because we felt like if we made the recommendations, it was up to the board to actually decide how to implement them if they chose to do so, rather than us standing here and trying to tell you all what you were basically what you were basically elected to do. So, you know, we wanted to, just wanted you to know that right up the front, that these are recommendations, and recommendations only, okay? And so if there are no questions at this point, we will proceed. All right? All right. Proceeding, the, under restructure and reconfiguration, there's been much discussion about how our schools ought to be populated, and, and there is, there was obviously a growing sentiment among our committee that community schools were important. And they believe that to take a school away from the community was literally putting a nail in the community, so to speak. And so they felt very strongly that instead of dealing with school closure, they felt we should actually do restructuring or reconfiguration of our schools. And from that point, you see bullet number one, to restructure all outline schools from K to six. That means that the current sixth graders at the central school, if this recommendation is adopted, would have to go back to their particular school zones. And they would have to go back to the outline schools. They wanted to let this board know that they thought that restructuring Central to a pre-K to six would, would also be a valid move for this board if this board chose to do so. They believed that we should restructure the high school to include seventh and eighth grade. From Central, move them to the high school. And recognizing that that would certainly decrease the population at the central school, they felt very strongly that this board should analyze and analyze the costs and look at the benefits of actually moving all, all administrative offices to be located at the central school. And so that is the covering under restructuring and reconfiguration. Any questions at this point?
I have one, Mr. Williams. You had said to restructure Central from pre-K through six. Would that be your outline schools not having pre-K and all your pre-K be at Central? Is that what?
No, no. Because it's currently a pre-K through six.
I just thought that that's what you were.
Yeah, yeah. That's exactly what it said. But I'm trying to tell you what I meant.
Okay.
Okay. All right. What I meant was that this, pre-K through six, as you can see, I missed pre-K through six, I guess, in the first bullet, because it's actually pre-K through six. So that would have covered that. That would have been the answer for your question, sir. Correct?
Yes, sir. I was just, I mean, I...
All right. So any other questions at this point? All right. Brother Justice is going to talk to you about transportation. Our transportation. We would recommend a mandate that transportation operates, their operation would run on a 200% of what transportation funding is generated within three years. Create a policy that strictly adheres to the two-mile radius for bus routes. And then negotiate with the local providers for extracurricular transportation needs. That is, that is a recommendation that the, our committee would like.
That's something to think about.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any questions?
Is this extracurricular in reference to sports?
Everything, sir. That would also, yes, sir, that's correct, sir. That's correct, sir. And also, I would, I would also like, since we're into this area, the board has been so very generous and kind the last three years, allow our church to utilize the buses as we pay for them for our, our different activities. It would also, with that transportation, is it financially feasible for that to happen with this board? That would go also within that transportation. So is it feasible for us to allow that to be done? So it would, while it would hurt us, my church, but if it benefits the school, it's better off. That goes along within this transportation. How can we assist to save money?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Then under the next is staffing.
Mr. Alfred?
One thing concerning the transportation back years ago, and Ms. Williamson may be able to speak to it. At one point, I remember, this is years ago on the board, when the whole transportation brought up concerning extracurricular that, and Mr. Reeves may know more about it, that at some point, when, when Greenville came into Madison, it was, a promise was made that, that we would furnish extracurricular transportation to students in Greenville or wherever by moving the students in. So we just need to keep that in mind as we make any decision in the future. That that promise was made years ago when the schools were consolidated, and that's something I think we need to honor.
Does that represent an activity bus?
It is.
And if, if my memory serves me right, the activity bus was not part of this particular discussion. This discussion was centered around those trips where a football team goes off, basketball team goes off, any academic or, or sports-related trips that would cause for there to be travel out, outside of town. We talked about the activity bus, but I don't believe the activity bus. If somebody run wrong, the members can certainly correct me. But I believe the activity bus was not totally, totally part of this because we recognize that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next would be staffing. Analyze positions to ensure that they support the mission, student performance, safety, and sustainability. The superintendent and school board should evaluate the district's operations to ensure that all positions support student performance and safety. Each position should be examined based on the degree to which the position has measurable positive impacts on student achievement, school's safety, and the degree to which each is central to the operation of the district and is physically sustainable. See any questions?
All I can say is I totally agree.
Totally.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Any other questions or anything? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Under administrative costs, the committee believed that the first, the first hallmark of fiscal responsibility has to begin with the district-level offices and has to be maintained by administration. We believe that while the school district may see and employ consultants, administrators, secretarial personnel, et cetera, and to include legal counsel, we certainly believe that all of those things need to be very, very closely and strictly analyzed to ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, to ensure that we are not spending money that we should not be spending for those particular products. They thought that it would be absolutely critical that we consider all outsourcing possibilities that may exist, payroll being one. And we know that there's been some discussion about outsourcing, and we did not discuss the merits of or not, of doing it or not doing it here, because we felt that if you were going to do it, that you should look into all of those particular nuances and not us. We're just making the recommendation to you that outsourcing is one option that you should consider. And I have to tell you, my being a union man for so long, it was kind of hard for me to sit there and listen to outsourcing. But I did, simply because here again, we're looking at the whole of the district and not just some components thereof. We felt that cross-training is a necessity among district-level administrators. Cross-training is a necessity. Because understanding in tough times, you may not have the dollars to facilitate all of the different administrative positions you may need, but you need to have the ability to cross-train so that if you get in kind of a squeeze, somebody who's in a particular office can help somebody else out whose department may be liking. So they felt that cross-training was very, very important. They felt that we needed to review strategies to decrease overall costs, including the following. The following being this. They felt strongly that this district should establish a three-year plan to have administrative costs equal to comparative districts around us. It's very important. When we started looking at some of the financial data and some of the salary data, interesting to note that they really weren't that much out of line when you really look at them. When you look at the data, it really wasn't that much out of line. When you look at teacher salary and the salaries for other employees, it really wasn't that much out of line. But we're in a dangerous place when $260, $260,000, rather, can wreck our system. We're in a dangerous place when we've got a $16 million budget, 16 roughly, after you take out all of the charter schools. We're in a dangerous place when $260,000 can wreck our budget and put our system in disrepair. So we've got to do a better job somewhere than what we're doing right now. They strongly believe that as we had the, the staff allocation plan for each one of our schools, including the central school and the high school, the committee felt very strongly that we should have a district-level staffing allocation plan as well that has numbers that represent true spaces so that you could directly allocate administrators based upon those particular spaces and based upon those particular blocks. Those are very important pieces because if you don't do that, you're going to find yourself relatively always overstaffed, always having more people than you need. And then having a redundancy of job responsibilities that could actually be done by one person versus having two or three people doing the same job. So those are the things that we strongly believe. And then again, they felt very strongly about the administrative offices in this building and, and this area being relocated to the central school. And therefore, they put it down as a bullet, again, on the administrative cost. Because they felt strongly that that was what needed to have happened in order, we needed to have happened in order that we may be able to make ourselves a little bit stronger fiscally and put us all in someplace instead of be scattered all out everywhere. Any questions relative to that?
I, I have one, Mr. Williams. Concerning the, when you made mention of the outsourcing, that would just include like payroll or, say for instance, some other part of the financial. You're not talking about like outsourcing custodial or lunchroom. I mean, what, what are you speaking of with outsourcing?
No, I am not. I want to make that clear. No, I am not. Okay? That's why I put in that little disclaimer about my being a union president. I even wouldn't like to see outsourcing a payroll, but I understand, because that even affects people that normally work for us on a standard basis. But I wanted you to understand.
I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, yeah. And that's a good question. That's a good question. We're not talking about outsourcing of any services that would infect our, affect our current employees other than payroll, other than payroll. Because if you have to hire people to fill that payroll position or those payroll positions, those are almost specialized skills, and you can't just bring anybody in. You just can't move a secretary from the central school and bring him in and say, "Okay, you're going to be now a financial clerk." It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And so, and to ensure that, that we may be able to stay within the realm of being fiscally sound, if the, the committee felt that we could if we needed to be, that they would recommend that, you know, we outsource any work that's in the financial department. And lastly, under this heading is the cost and benefits, again, of moving all administrative offices to the central school. Understanding that if you move seventh and eighth back to the high school, the central school is going to have a deficit of capacity. And we, the committee felt, we felt that, that it would be right to put the administrative offices out there at the central school. Any questions again relative to this particular section? All right. Madam Chair, seeing none. Lastly, before Ms. Brittany comes up, we're going to talk to you about the allocation of resources. This committee felt that we need to create, adopt, and enforce the use of specific processes and formula for allocating resources, okay? If one of the things that we're going to do is we say that every school must generate the amount of money that they, they need for FTE, and it must be covered it by their staff and their programs need to be within that range, then we need to have a policy or formula that really does that, okay? Because right now, there is no real way of knowing how to do it. We did hear about a stabilization plan that was used to, to support Greenville when Greenville was down, and the money was taken from other places to support Greenville, and that's how Greenville was staying open. That came to the table. There was a discussion about that. And so we believe that there needs to be a serious, serious effort brought forth of creating, adopting, and establishing a formula that would talk about the allocation of resources. How do we fund where we are? How do we fund the people that we have? How do we fund the different subtopics that we need to fund as far as transportation, as far as, as far as maintenance of plant, operation of plant, all of those particular things? How do we do that in such a way that we have a formula-driven process rather than just somebody deciding we need these many people and then you putting those people in place? You need to have something that is data-driven, that would allocate your resources in such a way that you know at all times, that you know at all times, this board and this administration know at all times where the real financial stability is and what, what it's really costing you to do all of the things that you need to do. And so the allocation of resources is going to be very important. When you have students that leave a school, they firmly believe that those teachers should not remain, that you should figure out how to reduce that staff so that you don't have an overload or overhead in staff at that particular school. And realizing that we've got some specialized programs where sometimes you may not have a whole classroom. You've got one or two students, or three, four students that need specialized services. You need that allocation plan to be able to decide how you're going to handle situations like that when you don't have a full classroom, okay? You need to be able to figure out how many employees you really need based on your student population overall. And that would flow through not only your academic side, but it would flow through your support staff as well, okay? Every place, every place. We need to be very, very strictly adhering to either a policy that we already have or we need to create one, and we need to make the adjustments so that it can happen so that you don't end up being overstaffed at any time, at any place, okay? Any questions?
This is for the allocation plan. I think it, I mean, I think it's a great idea. Just one clarification. You spoke of academic and support staff. I assume in your non-instructional, being in your parapros, your lunchroom workers, your custodians.
That's correct.
Are you also including, which I hope you're including, administration also in this?
Yes, sure.
And county office and...
Yes, sure. Yes, sure.
Because that's, that's where I think we are falling short here. I mean, we have a plan for our teachers.
Right.
And I think it sort of falls off at that point.
Right.
And there's a lot of people that we don't have a plan for, and it's, it's...
Well, and when we, when... Well, and when we, when we talk about this under this generalized heading, and it's a broad heading, okay? It's not a specific heading like some of the others were. It's very broad. But when we talk about that, we're talking about every area that encompasses the mission of this district, whether it be administration, whether it be custodial, whether it be food service, whether it be secretarial, everybody. Okay? Because if your resources are out of line or your staff is out of line with your resources, you're going to always run the risk of finding ourselves where we found ourselves just a little bit ago. Okay? And understand that is, this is an abnormality because normally we don't operate with a reduction of a hundred and, you know, a million dollars. Okay? We don't normally operate that way. Normally, we have a pretty good reserve so that we can maintain ourselves. But whenever we have such a drop as the one that we had, if you do not have a creative policy, some kind of way that you can jump back to that and say, listen, this is what we need to do, then you also run the risk time and time again of finding ourselves where we found ourselves in January. Okay? And so what we would like to see this district do, we really would like to see this district be able to go through whatever crises you have to go through, go through every, you know, whatever stumbling blocks you have in the way, and yet be able to maintain a quality educational program without people losing jobs and without our kids going lichen.
Well, if you have the allocation plan, then at least you can know that it's fair. You're doing it fair and equitable.
Exactly.
And at the end of the day, I mean, at the end of the day, you know it's fair, you know it's equitable, you know it's across the board. And I don't know that at this point it's that way. And it really doesn't hit to reality until you start comparing us with other districts.
Exactly.
Numbers. If you actually compare the, the data in other district, their numbers with their employees, our numbers with our employees, there's some areas that are skewed and it's, it's out of whack.
Exactly. I couldn't agree more.
I mean, that's, that's the reality of it.
One other, one other important caveat though, that we have to always consider. You just can't look at the numbers themselves.
No.
Numbers are very important, but you also have to look at whatever those job responsibilities of those particular individuals are. Whether, if they've got less of somebody, then you should really be comparing. The numbers speak for themselves. Okay? If we've got ten over here and they've only got two over there in the next county, okay? We need to make sure that the job functions are the same. Because if your job functions are skewed, then obviously your numbers are going to be skewed. Okay? So you've got to make sure that you hold everything intact. And so when we're talking about allocation of resources, that's part of it. That's part of it. Okay? So that when I'm comparing somebody in Calhoun County to somebody here in Madison County, I make, I need to make sure that they're in the same neighborhood when they're doing the job. Okay? Because if you've got two of them here and they've only got one, if you just look at the numbers, then you, you know, it's quick to say, okay, we've got too many. But the truth may be that there may be a difference in the job responsibilities where one person cannot necessarily maintain that particular focus. So looking at the job responsibilities are just as important as looking at the numbers. That's, that's why I said it's a very broad topic and you really got to drill down if you really want to find the essence of, of what this is all about.
And, and you know, in, in reality, the cold, hard reality of it, we have to look at our wants versus our needs.
Exactly. I couldn't agree more.
Human nature, we want a lot.
I couldn't agree more.
But, I mean, in reality, do we really need all that we're wanting?
And that is why it is absolutely critical that we get that kind of plan, create that kind of plan.
Right. I agree. I agree with you.
Create that kind of policy. Where you're not dealing with what people want, you're dealing with what the actual needs are.
Right.
And you're addressing the needs of all of your students as well as making sure that you're staying within the realm of your resources. Okay? Any other questions?
I'd like to remind the board about the study that was presented to us on January 19th, 2019, the Madison County Public Schools Fiscal Study, which hit exactly what you're saying. I wouldn't dare read it. There's 24 pages here, but it said Madison County has the highest number of employees, the lowest ratio of students to employees, and the highest per cost per administration compared to other districts actually larger than us.
Yeah. Again...
It's 24 pages and I've probably read it 24 times.
Again, they're dealing with, they're dealing with numbers, which is very important. But what we're doing, we're going further than numbers. We need to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where we're dealing with just numbers and we decimate or decrease the ability of our students to have a quality of education.
Well, that's number one.
So those responsibilities are very important. That's, that's our only point, is that the responsibilities are very important. Okay? Any other questions of me? Okay. Ms. Brown?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have been asked to speak about the recommendation regarding the VPK program. Of course, hopefully all of us understand that early childhood education is very important to our overall school system. Not only do they prepare the child for the academic ventures of later grades, but it also speaks to the social, emotional, and physical development, overall development of the child. So we understand that educating children as early as possible is always best practice. So we, we definitely commend our school district for valuing that and offering the VPK services to our children. However, the committee does recognize that VPK only pays for a certain amount of hours of the day. And after that funding is done, then the school district is picking up the rest of the bill. So the committee looked at that and what we came together as a group and we recommended that the school district actually discontinue subsidizing, meaning paying for the remainder of the day of the VPK program over and above any funding received for that function. So whatever the state allocate and pays for regarding VPK, after that, it is recommended that the school district no longer covers the cost or eat up that cost. And what we said instead is that the school district seek grant funding or other resources to pay for the remainder of the day. I was asked to speak primarily about this topic because I run the Head Start Program here in Madison County. We offer the same services not only here in Madison County, but in the other five counties that we cover. And we have that same, not necessarily a barrier, but we have to contend with VPK only covers a certain amount. However, we use other funding sources to still be able to offer the child and the family a full day of service. However, we use other revenues to pay for the remainder of the day. So for instance, a child may come the first four hours up until 12 o'clock under VPK funding and the remainder of the day, school readiness funding through the Early Learning Coalition. Another state agency may pay for the remaining, remainder of that day. And not only those, we have, of course, Head Start funding, private pay. There are additional revenues. I, if I understand correctly, the school district used to use the school readiness funding to help pay for the remainder of the day, but I think there was an issue with collection of fees and parents paying their part. And maybe that is what, I don't have all the history, but we were having that conversation is that maybe a part of the reason the school district decided to stop doing that part. And I'm sure Mr. Off.
I think we just didn't get, I mean, it was hard to collect the money from them.
And we have that too.
I, I mean, I, I think that was one of the main reasons we did. And, and again, as, as a board, I don't know, I don't know to what extent we're in the red with this program. I don't know. I mean, if it's, if it's operated with CDAs, it should be close to being, we'll have to take a good look at this to see.
And that was going to be a recommendation. We had actually asked, or at least I had asked if we could get the numbers, like how much was it really costing the district to provide that? But we didn't get that information. So you as the board, of course, can ask that information to really get the hard numbers to see if we're really, if the program is really costing the district that much. We didn't have that in front of us. But that's the recommendation that, of course, we continue to offer the VPK services, but to look for other funding grants or school readiness or other partnering with the Head Start Program could possibly be another avenue to offer the full day service, but not have the school district eating that cost. Any questions?
Are you saying that it's covered until noon?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Four hours. VPK only covers four hours. So how you...
And in all reality, with, with what the total amount is, if you have a CDA in the classroom, you possibly could be doing it where you are breaking even or very close to it. I, I just don't know what their numbers are, how much.
We have four CDAs at Central School, one teacher at Greenville, and Pinetta is certified because they do ESE, as well as VPK. We have two certified teachers at Central School as well.
That are just VPK?
That's VPK and ESE.
Yeah, ESE.
But that, thank you for the information. That's, that's good information to have and we can look into other avenues. But it, it'll be interesting to see just where we are with the numbers.
As far as the numbers.
I mean, I don't know that it may not be close to it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Dr. Pickles, again, I would like to thank our committee, those members of this community who gave up their time in order that we might meet. And we had three, probably two and a half hour recessions to go through this particular process. And I want to personally thank each of them for their time and for their effort and for their real work in the process. It was hard work. It's hard to sit and have to deal with the reality of it versus dealing with emotions, deal with the data instead of deal with emotions. It's hard to do that. But that process that was undertaken by us absolutely worked and it's got it to the place that we needed to be. And so here again, these are recommendations to you. That's all our responsibility was, is to present recommendations to you. And we thank you so very much for at least hearing them and considering them. And we hope that you will undertake some of these recommendations, if not all, to actually help improve our system fiscally and to ensure that we maintain a quality delivery of education to our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate you and your committee for all the work that you put into this. And we, I see some wonderful suggestions here. We thank you all.
Thank you for all your work and all the committee's work on this. I, I agree with, with all the suggestions are, are great and hopefully we can incorporate all of them. The one that really, we really need to move toward is the allocation plan for all employees.
Yes, sir. That is, that is exactly right.
I mean, that's imperative.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
The question is, where do we go from here, board members, with this? We, we have to get some information on a lot of the, most of this.
Well, the, the first, the first step and, and if we, if we start at the reconfiguration, the first step is we need to contact DOE and see, can we move, move the sixth grade back to the schools that have room? Greenville has room and I think Lee has room. I don't know that Pinetta does, but, and then to see about the possibility of moving the seventh and eighth grade to the high school. I mean, we can sit here all day and wish it, but someone, someone has to take the next step and notify DOE that we're requesting this based upon to run the district more financially responsible. We're requesting this move.
All right, Mr. Williams, Dr. Pickles.
I have already sent an email request and had a phone call request and they have not gotten back to me yet. I would like to point out that our capacity utilization at Lee, it's 87%, at Pinetta, it's 88%, at Central, it's 66%, at the high school, it's 58%, and then at Greenville, it's 46%. So you're fixing to lower Central down to probably a 40%. That's roughly 300 kids, if not more, that you're going to push out.
But if you're, if you're, if this committee has made the recommendation to move the county office there, and we were, we were thinking as the board, if we did push out, we could shut down at least one section of Central to save money on the utilities. Utilities there are 350,000 a year approximately. That's a big, that's a large amount of money. Utilities at Lee, Pinetta, and Greenville are 50,000 a year.
We also need to look at how this is going to affect the student within a whole. Some of the outline schools don't offer as much for the student itself to be pushed out for sixth grade, you know, extracurricular activity. We got to look at that also. There's, some of the kids play softball and basketball. Got to look at that. The central school has a science lab. We have band there. You got to look at all the, how it's going to affect the students itself. I know we're trying to help the schools. I understand that. But we got to look at the students themselves.
But, but if you look at them already at Lee, Pinetta, and Greenville, the students are doing well. So...
I know, but I'm just talking about the extracurricular activities. Students start to get into, as they grow a little older, they just want to get involved with different stuff. Would these schools be able to offer this stuff for the...
Your seventh and eighth graders would still have access to that because they'll be at the high school.
Yeah, when they get to be.
So it would be just, you're talking about just your sixth grader.
Yeah, but they're, they're still students in this county. You know, how would that affect them?
Again, as board members, I mean, I, I'm all for extracurricular, but at some point we need to look at academics and the financial, the financial status.
They'll get the academics at the central school also with being offered the extracurricular activities. Because I'll, I'll give you an example. If my daughter was at Greenville, my daughter wouldn't be able to play softball tonight. It's just an example.
But let's remember that elementary is K through six.
Right.
You know, that's, that's an elementary grade.
That's true.
So, and you know, it, it's not unusual for a child to be in a K through six school, which is basically what we're forming here. The three small schools plus Central become elementary schools. When they get to be in seventh grade and if, if this all works out and they go to high school, they can participate and they'll have numerous opportunities then.
But I'm, I'm just looking at all the options, like the science lab. There's a lot of things that's, that's being provided at the central school that does not be offered at the outline schools.
Mm-hmm.
Well, again, Ms. Gibson's made a very valid point. I mean, if you're looking at a, at a K through six school, that is an elementary school. And in elementary schools, you do not really have extracurricular. You, you're there to do the basics and go home.
This is, that's elementary. And they provide a lot of good experiences at those schools.
Right.
But as time go by, kids are being exposed and given more opportunity at an earlier stage, just like PB, I mean, early school education. I mean, it's important to have that. If you're, the days and times now, our kids need that extra.
Well, we're, we're very fortunate here in Madison that we do have an active recreation league.
Yes, we do.
And, and there's a lot of opportunities for kids to participate.
You're right. They can, they, we have a wonderful...
I just asked to look at all the options.
Well, we, we definitely would explore all the options.
Right. You know, and how would it affect our students?
Right. So, Dr. Pickles, you've contacted the DOE then on that. Okay?
And I'm just waiting on another call.
Okay.
I will try again.
Thank you for that. All right. All right. Five point six, adult education contracts. Dr. Pickles?
This is our current contracts. We need to have updated contracts for our adult education instructors and I ask approval. So it's for Ms. French, Ms. Fletcher, and Ms. Fletcher.
Right. All right. Is there a motion to approve the adult education contracts?
I make the motion to approve the adult education contracts.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell to approve the education contracts. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. Out of what money is this being paid out of adult ed?
Adult ed, yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Becky five zero. Public hearing, approval of advertised policies. Ms. Dr. Pickles?
Mr. Stuneford, are you going to show the policies?
I doubt the list, but we do need to say the individual policies. The policies and advertisements can be on the website as well out there.
Can you enlarge it for the public?
None of these are school safety policies that are generated by the Mark Stumpf Act, as well as revising any policies that we already have. Just one second. 1213 is school safety and student supervision welfare. 3213, 4213 are the same ones, but at different levels, either instructional or non-instructional. 5112 is school safety interest requirements. Not single point of entry. 5500 is school safety, student conduct. Fifty-five hundred is school safety, uh, with student conduct. Fifty-six ten point zero one has emergency removal of disruptive students. Seventy-four thirty zero one is environmental health plan. Seventy-four forty is plant security. Seventy-four forty point zero one is protection of school personnel and property. Eighty-four oh five is school safety and security. Eighty-four oh six reports of suspicious activity and potential threats to schools. Eighty-four oh seven is school safe officer, or excuse me, safe school officers. Eighty-four ten is crisis event intervention response. And eighty-four twenty is an emergency management, emergency preparedness, emergency responses at agencies.
We'll op, yeah, we'll open this for public hearing? Public input? Is there a motion to approve the advertised policies?
I'll make the motion to approve the policies that were advertised.
We have a motion by Ms. Williamson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell to approve the advertised policies. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Becky, five zero. P O re, five point eight, P O requests. Dr. Pickles?
Um, oh, I think they, I think the wrong thing was sent. Okay, maybe that is the correct requisition listing, P O listing. Um, I thought she told me there were only four. And that's more than four. So you'll see under their, um, requisitions for the week of three eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
It's a two-page document.
What number is that, please?
That is gonna be five point eight.
It's not on my Word doc, Word docs.
Five point eight, no?
It's not on here.
It's under the P O request.
The P O request.
Oh. When, again, again, Ms. Gibson, when did this appear on here?
Um, Ms. Fletcher did not have this prepared until today. Because we were off last week.
That's tough. You know, the, I mean, it, meaning when you got.
If you'll recall, we met on the Wednesday and we approved everything. So these are from the Thursday, Friday and today.
Could, could we please have, um, ten minutes, Ms. Gibson, to go through this, please?
Yes, definitely. Do you need ten or fifteen?
Fif, I mean, I, I need to look through it before this.
All right. We'll recess for fifteen minutes.
We'll begin again. We are at 5.8 P O request. Dr. Pickles said that basically we've okayed most of them there with the exception of six. The Amazon, Disney, R.J. Young, Kit Hud, and a field trip.
It is the ones dated 3-18. And I do ask your approval on those. R.J. Young, there's four of those and it's because of the locations and how they're paid.
Do we have a motion to approve the P O request?
I make the motion to approve the P O request.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second. We have a second by Mr. Daniels to approve the P O request. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, ma'am. And I realize that this is spring break and I appreciate all that was done to get us this information, but I thought we had decided if we're not going to have this meeting then then this is going to be posted where the public can see and we can see on the Wednesday, which I know that last week doesn't, I mean, last week's out of the question because we were on spring break. But this next week, we need to have this by, or no, I guess Wednesday, we need to have it by Wednesday to let them know by Friday. Is that my understanding of how?
Is that how you understood it, Mr. Copeland?
But if you recall, we already had our agenda posted. And so we already had the placeholder there for the P Os before the decision was made too.
I understand, but I'm just getting reassurance that this is going to occur on Wednesday.
I think Mr. Copeland is concurring with that.
Okay.
If we could finish with, there's other information that Mr. Copeland will go over. He does have our financials and there's a few other.
We need to take the vote.
Yeah, let me finish the one.
I just don't want you to move on.
No, we won't move on. Any, okay, any further discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Becky, five zero. Mr. Copeland or Dr. Pickles?
One of the documents up there is a general fund summary from 2009 to 2018. Mr. Copeland prepared this after we had our audit. So you'll see from 2017 to 2018, our unrestricted rose from 4.0 to 5.5. And I think he talked to Ms. Hart today. And we're just having to finish up our management letter and our one response. So. 2018.
That's one and a half percent over the 4% audited for the fiscal year end June 30th of 17. So we were pleased with those results. Unfortunately, that doesn't change the forecast, but it does help a little bit with the beginning fund balance being higher than we had projected. You know, I was worried we may have audit findings in the other direction. But we did not.
All right, let me ask you something. You didn't have the microphone there.
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's fine, but would you repeat what you said before you got the microphone? Just to make sure everybody hears it because we have a lot of people watching in the community and, you know, they're very interested.
Right. Yeah, so what I'm saying is, we had our audit exit conference and got our final numbers. And you'll see that this is the first time since, if you look, 2012, that our unrestricted fund balance has actually gone up. And again, I was pleased and we've still got a rough task ahead of us, but at least we gained some ground. And it gives us a little, a better starting point with the 5.5 than the 4.7 unaudited. And so I just, you know, wanted to share that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
And again, I, let me, let me pull up the February financial report. I've added a couple of things to this as we kind of work towards getting the school level financials pulled together and designed and modified like we need to. The first page is the overall summary. And this is for the eight months ended February. If you see here, if you go over here to year-to-date activity, again, we're eight months into the year, so 67% of the year has elapsed. And if you look at our expenditures by function total, you'll see that we're at 64.52% through the eight months. Now that's going to continue to likely go the other direction as our funding is lowered for the remaining portion. Now, and we've, we've done the budget amendments for all the lower F E F P money, but as you see, you'll see that that number grow as you progress. But I wanted to share some areas that I feel, you know, we're talking about looking ahead and where we can cut and where we can, where we can identify areas that there are savings out there. I think our instructional materials and things like, we've spent a lot of money early in the year and we have to have the stuff, but we really, we've got some opportunities there if we, with Ms. Hill and manage that correctly and continue to manage it. If you go through here and you look, again, here, another area, the board expenses, we lowered the budget there and we're running under, under the percentage of the fiscal year. So there's another area that we can likely look out next year and carve a little bit out. And we've got, the transportation's another area. If you see this 7,800 function, even though transportation F E F P doesn't come anywhere close to funding what they have to have, they have been running good compared to the budget numbers. And I think as we take some of those ideas that Pastor Justice and Mr. Williamson talked about in the transportation, that's another area. I think as we budget going forward, we may be able to get some, some lower numbers. Administrative technology, we spent a lot of money upgrading I T. Not all of that went through here, but I think we've got most all of that behind us. We should see a reduction going forward in those expenditures annually. We've identified as, and done budget amendments to move qualified expenditures to our food service fund, and that's, that's helped. Food service is doing well, so anything that we can identify to get it out of the general fund and pay for it through there, we're continuing to do that. We've got, again, after October, we've got health insurance and benefit options I feel like will get us quite a big savings for next year. We can't go through a short year renewal. We will lose our pro share for this year. And we don't want to do that because that, that helped us this past year. And the way our loss runs are going right now, it looks like we may have another healthy pro share payment coming next year.
You are expecting that?
I can't, I'm not going to promise anything, yeah.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility. And when I spoke with our broker a couple of weeks ago, we're still running real good on our loss runs. Now, if something happened and that got out of kilter, yeah, that could affect it. But we also, again, have options with different carriers with plans that are just as good as we got or better with much lower premiums. So that's, that's something we, we, we don't want to take anything away. We want to add. And so, and then, you know, like Mr. Williamson said, the outsourcing, the, we've got some attrition coming next year. I think we can, we can pick up a little bump there. But right here, if you go down here to fund balance, you see it's 1.701, 106. That's the audited beginning balance, which is up about 132,000 from the unaudited balance. So we actually, we actually went in the right direction with the audit instead of having audit findings going in the other direction. Another area we need to continue to focus on is utilizing our local capital improvement funds. You know, there's restrictions, rules to that, but we really did that last year with, with a lot of our capital improvements. And I think that's what, that is what has helped us some with the operating results from last year. So I put a, the next page, 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 page two there, it's cattywampus, let me rotate it. This is starting to work on the school level financials. And we've still got, you know, some, some work to do on them to get them shored up. But this is the same thing. This is for the eight months through February for each of our district schools. And it's most helpful if you, if you look at the expenditures that have been charged to each school for the first eight months, you'll see that, of course, instruction, your largest line item, and then school administration and operation of plant. And I like to look at it on a per F T E basis. So if you look at the first one, which is the high school for this current count that we're in, 498.5 F T E. And you can look over here on this column right here, I'm sorry, and you can kind of see the cost per F T E for each one of those line items for each school. Again, we've got some designing to do and some, some, some things to work on, but we're going to continue to get where we can get these at each individual location. And right here, this is another item I kind of sent, I wanted you all to take and start looking at it. We're trying to look out into next, next fiscal year and obviously start the budget process so we know what we need to do at this point. It's hard to do that right now, not knowing how the funding is going to be. There was a report, the governor's recommended calculations, and I based my just rough projection for next year on, on that document. So it's, it's going to change, but this will kind of give you, or give us a starting point as we look into the next fiscal year. We do have to make some cuts, we know that. I mean, cuts in expenditures. And so we'll, we'll continue identifying those and planning for next year. I sent, I sent you, there's another document out there, which is a larger document. And that's the one I don't want to go over in, in right this second. I want, I just need to start, if we can start looking at it, studying it. And it's, it's also a school level, but it's for, it's a school level for next year's projections. So I'm, you know, available for questions, comments, or whatever. So y'all, if you start looking through it, we can, we can get moving on it and.
Well, thank you, Mr. Copeland, for that information, and we will be looking at it for sure. Any questions for Mr. Copeland?
No, no, ma'am, I just have a question that where, I know that we're going to receive the requisitions for the week and the financials, but at what, where will it be located on the website for the people at home who may want to go to see it?
I can't answer that question. I can get with Isaac or, no, they want to put it on, we need to, on the website.
I want it to be where it's friendly to the average person at home, where they're not going to have to go on a scavenger hunt for this information.
We can, we can set up a.
I just asked for it to be friendly where they can get to it.
I'll get with Isaac or, and.
We can put it under the school board documents where, put it as a separate link under school board meetings.
Again, I just want it to be easy and where they can find it if they wish to look at it.
Absolutely.
Yes, we have a tremendous amount of interest in the school system, so let's provide them with the information. Any other questions for Mr. Copeland? All right. 5.9 Personnel Recommendations, Dr. Pickles.
Ms. Gibson, I do need you all to accept the financial statements because if you recall, we have to send these to DOE every month under, as part of our fiscal recovery.
Okay, no, I thought we just voted on that though.
Not on the, not on the monthly financial.
Oh, the monthly, okay, I'm sorry. All right, do we have a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
I make the motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Miss, we have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second. Second by Mr. Daniels to approve the monthly report. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Oppose? Five zero, Becky, thank you.
And I have one more request. I'm requesting that the prereq, the prereq, or the requisitions for the week of 3-18, 19 that we just reviewed and approved in the financial or the check registry also appear on the website with the ones for the next week, please.
All right. Personnel recommendations, Dr. Pickles.
Well, currently, there's no screen school volunteers or personnel recommendations at this time. We do have staffing table recommendations, proposals for next year because you just did those. So we use some formulas. We have a formula sheet that you all emailed this afternoon at noon. So we did those based on our projections for next year. So, Mr. Stoneacher, which, one would you like to start with? And we'll kind of look at them and go through them. You'll open up one. Just let me know which one you're going to start with. This is all formula-driven. So you, you put your projected enrollment in for your K to three and four to eight. It has, you know, your class size in there. You'll put your E S C calculation, so it tells you then your units or what your projected F T E will be. Off to the side is how many we currently have, so it totals up those numbers. So you'll have subtotals and then you come down to your total. And then you'll have down there your teachers, how we're, where we have them in general fund if we have any, out of, coming out of class size reduction or S A I, Title I. All of those are entered in. Over on the non-program units, we do have various. Over on the non-program units, we do have various things listed such as pre-K, if we had a social worker, a guidance, things like that. So based off our current staffing allocation plan, those are all listed over there. All of these totals come down to our units and then the generated units, and that comes up where we have the difference of net units. So the things in yellow, we know we're going to have to kind of change. So based off of some of these, you'll see where it's either over or under. So this was Greenville.
So let me get this clear now. We're generating 7.14 teachers, and we presently have eight teachers. Okay.
But what are you recommending for the next school year?
I'll get to the staff, I'll go through each school. Now, this number right here, if I may add, you take the student population, what's currently in place, what we're projecting for any retentions, but actually, it would be short 129 of the teacher. So therefore, Greenville, we're not expecting to cut any teachers from Greenville. It's all cost effective, depending on over to this to pay another teacher for 129.
We did do a round down. If I recall, I think all of them were just over, so we just did a round down. Do you want to go to Lee or Pinetta next? Under Lee, you'll have the same thing. You have your K3, then your 48. Then you'll have your ESC students, and these are based off all our projections again. So for a total of 198 and a half FTE, which is a total of 10, or 10.06. And then you'll see where they have a pre-K teacher and then 6.87 out of general fund, seven and a half out of categoricals. So we're going to have to make some changes there.
And this is, this is Lee?
That's Lee.
So what are you recommending?
We'll get to that on the staffing table. And this formula is used in other counties, too. But it's the same thing if you just take the numbers and divide it out. This is just all formula-driven. So Pinetta, again, you'll have your K3, 48, for 162, then add in your ESC for a total of 202. And then at, you'll see where you have your curriculum, pre-K. And so they're generated units versus how many they actually have. Do you want to go to Central School next? And these are all in board docs, so then you were emailed. Central, under the basic, it's a total of 788. When you add in 198 of ESC for a total of 986. So by the time you come down, they're generating 65 and a half. So, and then we've given them some class size reduction in SAI teachers.
So I currently have 81 teachers?
81 on sta, on the staffing table, yes, sir.
At Central, yes, ma'am. And then the high school. Theirs is a little different. Their basic programs generate 337, their ESC 80, but they also have vocational. So their CTE earns them a little extra, so they have 485. So they're generating 21, and then when you add in any of the grant-funded categoricals. And then we've also put the guidance in the media over there, and then band and art. So we have our band, we have our other programs. So now, if you want to go to the staffing table.
We'll have to enlarge this. If you look into yellow, the yellow for each of the schools is what we're projecting for next year. At the high school, we're not projecting any change at the high school. If you, the total column right here will be 35. Instead of showing you the both pages, I'm just going to go down, down the line and show you where the cuts would be. At the central school, we currently have 81 on the staffing table. Based off of the student enrollment and the growth of charter schools, we're anticipating an actual decrease in, in possible of students there. So we're anticipating a four per, or four instructional staff cut at the central school. As I mentioned earlier, Greenville has eight and will retain eight. Lee has 15 and will retain 15. Pinetta has 15 and will lose one and get cut to 14. The district office, we already cut one from it, so it will, will remain at three. Total bodies or total positions cut will be from 157 to a proposed 152.
What, what from, you said the district office, I thought we were talking about schools.
Well, we are, I'm talking about district, see, the district office has instructional staff. Remember, at, at, when we approved this staffing table, we approved the cut of, of the DJJ staffing specialist.
The ESC staffing specialist.
So we have, right now, we have three instructional staff that are on the district
If you'll look through, one is our reading allocation, and then you'll see where there, the others are paid out of ESC, IDEA, and pre-K.
Using the formulas that Dr. Pickles went over, over the document, that's how we were able to generate these potential and recommended decreases in staff.
As you study the staffing table, remember anything in the green is categoricals, and then anything over in the pink or grant-funded. And then the regular white is general fund, unless it's something said, but that's how we have them coded. So based on our projected enrollment, this is what we're projected to need for our instructional staff next year.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stahlnaker. We appreciate you getting that information together. I'd like to know how the board feels about what, how they see next year coming, what changes you might want to see next year.
I, I appreciate these five people that have, or these five positions that have been identified, but in, in looking at what we went through back in January, I think that we need to sit here and we need to come up with some more cuts of, of some sort.
I, I, I agree, and I'd like to hear from each-
I mean, we just had a committee present to us that, that there, I mean, they've made the recommendation for us to look at staffing and administrative costs, and I think we need to look at that.
Can we pull back out the staffing allocation plan again that we did not vote on last time, and I have that on here? But this is the staffing table based on our projected enrollments. This is what we will need.
I, I-
And I have that, and I have that on here. We're just going to have to work off of it.
Again, I don't know that, I don't know, I know that I'm not questioning-
No, I'm not.
-the instructional staff. By no means am I questioning that. I'm questioning non-instructional and administrative. And that's not up here, I don't think.
That's, no, that's not in our staffing table. That's on our staffing allocation plan. So now, if you're good with the staffing table, with instructional, then we can move on to the staffing allocation plan.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know about that.
No, let's not move on. I don't want to move on either.
But because there may be some people, there, there may be some positions that, that we're not good with that may would fall under that.
I, I'll start off, Mr. Alfred. I have looked at this very carefully. I mean, I have, I've actually studied it. In January, like I referred to earlier, we were given a school fiscal study, Madison, I believe you requested it, Dr. Pickles, from the superintendent's organization.
Back in October, yes.
Back in October, and we received the information in January. Okay. There's a lot of information there. I've looked at it, I've read it over many times, I have to do that. And again, it's, it, let's make it simple. It boils down to we have too many people on the payroll. It, it's a simple thing. Madison County Public Schools, okay, we have been on a decline. I'll go back 20 years. We can go back when Central was opened, it was 1,700 students. Right now, they're lucky if they've got 1,000 students. All the schools, the population has declined consistently. We, we're a small rural district. We have 2,000 students, 2,000 valuable students, which we want to provide a high-quality education. But we have to be realistic. We, we, you know, you listen to the legislature about there's no money coming, and it's going to be rough times, but we've got to prepare for the rough times. And I've decided we need to have one foot in the present and one foot in the future. We have got to be aware of what's going on here. All right. I'd like to address Madison County Central School. This with our 1,000 students, okay. There, there has been, for whatever reason, different reasons, a continuous exodus from the time that school opened up. I went back on our school board minutes this, for 1819. There was at least, and you can correct me, Mr. Stahlnaker, if I'm wrong, there was at least 12 teachers that have left this year and of various pairs. I mean, in other words, we can't attract and retain teachers in that school. Okay. As of February 19, 19, we, we, we're, well, right now, we're, we need four elementary teachers, right? We have not been able to fill the positions. In other words, these kids have gone through this school year. The board has asked many times, you know, do we have openings? Yeah, we got openings. Okay, well, they don't get filled, which, I mean, couldn't find qualified applicant, which I know it goes even back to the colleges aren't cranking out the students. I mean, someone mentioned, you may have mentioned, the University of Florida, how they just, people aren't going in to teaching. Okay. Well, I will not demean, disrespect, or devalue any positions. We need the teachers. No one can replace a classroom teacher. You can stick them in front of a computer. It, you, they have to have a teacher, especially children in poverty areas. A lot, I mean, I hate to refer to way back when, but I'm from way back when, I guess. In other words, this is the one place, school, where children experience consistency, and they need it. And these kids, and I'm, I'm, again, I'm still on Madison County Central School. Okay. We, as I said, have the difficulty attracting and retaining, but we do have teachers here. These teachers are in various positions, and it's nice to have this position, that position, and the support. I, I'm all for it. I mean, I, I, the pairs, I mean, they're worth their weight in gold. I'm not going to take that away, for sure. But I'm going to, I'm going to make my little list here. Okay, we've got the deans. Let's, let's start off with deans. Okay. The principal is in charge of the school. The principal sets the expectations. In other words, you, the school's going to be run this way, I'm going to inspect it, it has to be done this way, and that's all there is to it. Then you've got the vice principals. You've got the classroom teacher, you've got the guidance counselor, and it's to help solve problems, and let's include the parents, too. But as far as deans, they're good. Like I said, I'm not going to disrespect, demean, or diminish their position. They've done a good job. But we need the teachers. I don't care, we, we need them, and we've got to look right in our own neighborhood here. Okay, coaches. Coaches were something in maybe in the early 2000s to service the D and F schools. I know it's in the reading plan. The reading plan can be changed, too. And they do a fabulous job. But those are teachers. We need the teachers. The kids need the teachers. No one can replace a teacher. Okay, we've got the continuous improvement specialists. And it was mentioned, there's some, a proposed legislature that if maybe schools are C schools, we can, will need them? Well, guess what? I'm not working on an if and a when and a maybe. If that happens, we'll come back to the drawing board and we'll make sure they have what they need. Okay, that, those are all teachers. All right. Please, board members, jump in anytime. I'm just, I'm on a roll right now, but that's, that doesn't mean I can stop my roll. These are my recommendations, but again, and I, I know some of you can, might want to contribute something, this, our ESC department. Here, all these district staffing plans, Dr. Pickles supplied us with them. These counties have, I can look next door, there's 6, 6,000 students at Swanee County. We've got 2,000. We've got more people working for us over here than the other counties with more kids. And you know, they've got all kinds of problems and, you know, just like we do, but then they've got a lot more kids, too. So I say ESC, Dr. Pickles, I've asked for, you had a study done on that. You actually told us results of the study, not written. We didn't get a written report.
I just have verbal, I do not have a written study yet. The date you told me he had not come yet, the date you quoted in an email, I told you he was coming on that date, on January 4th. But I do not have this, the written study yet.
I know, I believe you. But, but you know, I'm thinking, if a study was done in my district and it involves students and it involved teachers, and I had a stranger coming in here, I'd want to know what the report said. You know, I mean, in other words, it's not a secret, I hope, but that, that, and someone else may want to address this ESC. I mean, you've got, we've got five people servicing our 2,000 students, and I'm looking at the other counties with three times as many students, and they've got one or two servicing them. So yes, we've, this has got to be addressed. And again, those are teachers. Teacher, we need the teachers and the classroom. As far as administration goes, we've got this position in human resources, 60% out of general fund. I know part of it was going to be taken out of Title V, which can be transferred over to someone else. In the past, and I think Mr. Alfred has alluded to this fact, that, you know, when times were tough, and times are tough, you took on different responsibilities. And that's, that's where we are right now. And I'm going to say it again, we want to provide the best possible education for the children. We have 2,000 children. We are not West Palm Beach, this is not even Swanee County. This is Madison County. This report outlined it specifically. We have too many people working for us. And I'm not disrespecting them. I'm not saying they didn't do a good job. But it even says, we, we have 11 managers. How, they're saying, how come? Why so many? Are they necessary? What's going on? In other words, there, what's going on with Madison? Mr. Daniels?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I thought our purpose of being here tonight, we, you know, at least I understand the need to, to reduce and to cut back. And I think if we should go ahead and, we, we need to make some efforts here, you know, at least during the night. know, at least during the night, um, towards that end. We, we, I think we, there's a general consensus that we need to have a reduction in course. And, um, you know, and, and we're going based on, from what I understand, the projected forecast for next year, and this would be a good start. You know, it forecasted in nineteen twenty school year, and the need for, basically, you know, they basically put up the formula based on the projections, um, I, I think we need to start somewhere, as opposed to, because we can, we can sit down, now you're talking about, we need, we, we know, we, we need to cut. My thing is, let's, let's, let's get the ball rolling.
Why don't, why don't we start at, we'll start at Central and work our way through the schools, and if you have something at that school, then we can bring it up and we can decide.
And, and I wanna, I want more thing. Our employees took two furlough days.
Right.
And that is a hard hit when you don't make too much money. And I appreciate what they did, I mean, but that, let's keep it in mind. It's not gonna be repeated next year. I mean, that, that was a one-time deal.
Let's, let's, let's try to be methodical with this and start at Central, and then move to, um, move to the next school and just work our way down, and
Okay.
Maybe finish at the county office.
Could I point out something? Um, you were also emailed board request today. Um, Sam, if you wanna leave it like that, that may be easier. Um, from the fiscal study, we have the job code assignments. Um, we were trying to figure out, where did all these numbers come from? Where did the fourteen come from? Where did the eleven, where did the sixteen, the eleven managers, or either word processing center managers, mailroom, lunchroom managers, um, and then head custodians? That's your eleven. The E S P support, so your educational support personnel, that's the hundred and thirty-six. So, and then your paras and administrative support. Instructional staff consists of classroom teachers, anyth- anybody from your school counselors, social workers, um, any of your specialists, librarians, other instructional staff, such as learning res- um, resource specialists, instructional trainers, and coaches. And then the administration, I think we had fourteen. That's anywhere from your executive and general directors, your directors, assistant directors, supervisors, coordinators, and administrators on special assignment. This was data from two years ago. Now, we have two chiefs, so we would have, I guess they're gonna be considered executive directors, 'cause they do not have chiefs on here. We have three supervisors, and we have seven coordinators now. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, ten total, from, down from fourteen. Well, I counted her in the number. So we have a director, one, two, three, four, five, six. We have six coordinators and a director, and three supervisors, and two of those are chiefs in there. So there's ten, so we're down from fourteen from two years ago. I do not, Sam, do you have our total instructional staff?
We have one.
Currently. Our current total.
Yes.
How many is that, real quick?
One fifty-seven.
So we've put, I mean, we're staying right about there. The, our clerical, those other skilled craft workers, and then our managers and things, those I don't think have changed. But you also have to remember, they're also on continuing contracts. So unless you eliminate a position, that person leaves, retires, whatever, and we don't fill that, and we haven't been filling sec- we filled a secretary at, um, Pinetta, but other than that, we haven't filled a secretary position in two years. That was the last time we hired somebody.
So are you saying that, that we have, we have no reason to make cuts?
No, I'm not saying that, but this data is two years old.
But, but I, I appreciate that data, but also know, as a board member, our responsibility is positions. Your responsibility is filling the positions.
That is correct. And we are down.
So as a board member, we may, we may decide on what positions we want to have, and what positions we do not want to have.
And we are down for administrators from two years ago.
And, and, and we appreciate that information as we move forward with this.
I can't do anything about the non-instructional unless you cut positions. If you'll look on the second page, I have listed every position there with the salary range. Oh, Mr. Stahl, I'm sorry. This is every position. And the salary range by the board-approved salary schedules.
Well, as Mr. Alfred said, we're in charge of positions.
Well, that's what Dr. Pickles has said to us in an email.
Well, no.
And that's the reason I sent you this.
So we're in charge of positions.
And that's the reason I sent you this position list.
And let's remember the children.
Right.
Let, let's, they're number one here.
Right.
And what happened at Central, I don't approve of at all. And I, I, and, and it's nice to have all these extra positions, which they are extra, doing a marvelous job. But let's remember where we are and what we've got to deal with. Mr. Alfred?
Um, I, I just think we need to start at Central and work our way down. Um, do the other board members?
Does it have to do with what we're talking about right now? Go ahead.
You, you reference these, these staff. Why is the human resources the only hot-paid administrator that you have referenced?
I don't feel like I have to give an excuse for that, Mr. Stahlnaker.
And also.
No, let me stop, no, let me stop you.
I'm speaking. You also referenced.
Uh-uh. I'm stopping you, right now.
Let me begin.
I am not gonna take any dis- this board is not gonna take any disrespect.
I'm a disrespectful board.
'Cause you, the last meeting, you were very, very close, and I will not allow it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move on.
Mr. Stahlnaker, will you bring up the staffing allocation plan and everything?
Um, Ms. Bell?
I'm just so sick of this disrespect going on here.
Okay, well.
I mean, we need to, we need to make some, we need to make something happen here.
Well, we're, we're about to do that.
But we've been going over this stuff since January. We've been talking about cutting people since January. They got, we got this staffing table, we done did this, we done did that, and we have not done nothing, really.
Well, now is the time.
Now's a good time to do it.
It's a good time to do it.
Now's a good time.
They have to be remembered.
What is the staffing table for?
The staffing table predicts how many people you need, depending on the student population.
So why are we trying to add people to that?
What, ma'am, we're, we're about to cut some people.
No, we're not adding anybody to it. That's definitely, we're.
No, we're not adding.
Are we saying what we need and what we don't need?
What, what we're doing right now is subtracting, actually, if you wanna call it, rather than adding. And, you know, because we have to make it appropriate for the students that we have, always keeping the students in mind, of course.
The students comes first.
Well, that's right, but, but we've, we've gotta be able to afford it.
We've gone a whole year with four classes with no teacher.
Yeah.
We cannot do that again. We cannot put ourselves in a position to have four classes with no teacher for a whole year. Those four classes of children deserve a teacher.
Plus one more class. It was four elementary, plus another, a math class, yes.
May I address that? Just because we do not have a teacher hired does not mean those students are going without a teacher. Ms. Dixon, would you like to explain how you have restructured your school?
Don't need to restructure, you need a teacher.
Say it.
But would you come to the microphone right here, please? You've made it very clear, this is her school.
I don't mind, do I need to go do the?
Well, then, we just have the microphone over here.
Um, all of the students at, um, Central have a certified teacher teaching them, um, and they have had all year, even though on the staffing table, it appears that there, there are vacancies. What we've done to make sure that each child has a certified teacher is compact classes down. So for example, in second grade, on the staffing chart, it shows that we're short one teacher. We took that class, we've never had a teacher in that position, even though we've interviewed, and interviewed, and interviewed, and interviewed, and interviewed again. So those students were dispersed among the other five classes, so they have all had certified teachers, all year, for every vacancy that we have had at Central. We have also, um, at our, uh, last resignation, uh, which was in, our opening was in third grade, we took, um, one of the E S E teachers that was certified in elementary, who's currently teaching that third-grade class, and then have worked with Lori to make sure that all the E C students are also receiving their services by dispersing them among the other teachers that we have on staff. So at no point has any class at Central gone without a certified teacher this year.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. In other words, you made larger classes, when you say this first.
Yes, ma'am, we had to go over, to make sure that we had a certified teacher. We may have twenty-two sitting in a class instead of the eighteen.
Okay, but wouldn't it be nice to have a smaller class with a teacher in it?
Absolutely, but we were unable to, to find a certified teacher. And so to make sure that the students receive the best possible education, we had to increase the class size.
And I understand why you did that.
Right.
I understand your reasoning, but then again, like I said, when you've got teachers that are available, but they're not in the classroom, this is what happens.
Right. I think the only, I mean.
And if you're a teacher, I'm a teacher, too, so.
Right, and I totally agree. The only thing I want to make sure that is clear, is that there's not been any student at Central that's gone without a certified teacher.
That makes me feel better.
Ms. Dixon, since you're the principal of the Central School, have anybody come and discuss the things that you think that, they think that you would need? You know, like, job-wise, have, have anybody come and talked to you about what positions you think that needs to be, um, cut?
Um, I have.
You have hands on, you're there every day.
Right.
You know what you need. Have anybody come and talked to you about it?
I have had conversations with, um, Dr. Pickles has come and sat, and we've discussed, um, some positions. Um, I like discussing it by positions and not by people. I think I agree with that. But other than that, no, ma'am, I've not had any conversations.
So we need to take that into consideration also, to talk to Ms. Dixon, see, she knows, she runs the Central School. We need to discuss that with her also, 'cause she knows what she needs.
Yes, Mrs. Dixon does know what she needs, and the board is in charge of the positions.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so we need to talk to her to know
But.
What's the ins and outs.
All I'm addressing is the certified teacher, so unless you have.
And we appreciate that, thank you.
That's all I need to add.
To the superintendent, it should have been asked on this.
Mm-hmm. All right, Mr. Alfred?
Okay, if we go, if we start at Central and go back to the original sheet that was given to us by Dr. Pickles, um, at our January the twenty-second meeting, um, it had, that someone had made up, and I assumed that Ms. Dixon had recommended, or Dr. Pickles, or someone, that there be two receptionist clerks cut, a guidance counselor. Um, and, and I'm seeing that we have two guidance counselors there, and at that point, if we were able to cut one guidance counselor, then why can't we cut one now? I, I mean, if, if we were prepared to cut a guidance counselor in January, then, then what's saying that we can't cut one for next year and have just one guidance counselor?
If it wasn't needed in January, why would it be needed now? That's, I, I, I think I remember Dr. Pickles saying that she did consult with the principals, which of course is the right thing to do.
So, so that is, that is one. I mean, if, again, if we were able to do it in, in January, then, then why can't we do it now for this next school year?
Of course, they wouldn't be leaving till the end of the year, because they're under contract until Jan- July first, right?
Well, right. Right. Um, the, the two receptionist clerks, the guidance counselor, again, if you cut one guidance counselor, I feel that you should probably do a guidance secretary, 'cause why would you have a secretary there without, um, a counselor? Um, I, I believe that A Ps should be cut down to eleven months. I mean, I know that we're doing ten plus two, but you know what? The two, the one month is coming from something that could be used in the classroom. I want people in the classroom. I, I, again, I, the, those positions are great, and we have to have them, but, but when, when you say to me, "Oh, it's a grant doing it." Yeah, it is a grant, but that is money from somewhere. That is money being used from somewhere that could be used to benefit children. Now, if you're telling me that this money cannot, um, that you're paying for this, um, AP cannot be used for children in the classroom, either for a teacher or a parapro in the classroom, then we may have a discussion here. But, but if you're saying that we could use it for a teaching position or a parapro, there is no discussion, and my mindset for that month's worth of salary.
Mr. Alfred, are you saying that, that keep the three assistant principals and make them eleven?
No, no, ma'am, I'm saying, I'm saying that all A Ps in the district should be cut to eleven months, that we should follow our staffing plan based upon, back in January, with Dr. Pickles' recommendations concerning that an AP be cut from Central. I mean, again, at, at January, if you could cut an AP in the midst of January, then why in the world can't we do it for the next school year? If you have, if you have less than a thousand kids, based on these projections, it's nine hundred students.
We're not even.
Nine, nine hundred and fifty, it's, it's not even a thousand. So, so again, based upon your staffing allocation for administrators, it should be one cut. Not by, not by my recommendation, but based upon your allocation. Um, I also believe that, um, the one part-time secretary, I don't know if that's been carried over, that should be cut. If, again, if it was on the list in January to be cut, it should be cut for this next school year. Um, the reading and math coaches in the classroom, um, I believe, first off, that they should both be ten months, and if, if, and again, the other night, hearing that Ms. Pinkard was a math coach is the first I've heard that. I mean, I know that Ms. Pinkard was a classroom teacher.
She is a classroom teacher.
She is a classroom teacher, but she's, we're saying that she's a math coach, which, again, Ms. Pinkard is a fabulous teacher, and I'm sure she's helping people, but again, if, if she is working, if she's working in the classroom, seeing students, then my request is, if we're gonna have a reading coach, then that reading coach also serves students.
Well, it was mentioned that the teachers, who may be having difficulty, go in and observe Mrs. Pinkard, which, there's nothing wrong, that's been going on for hundreds of years. In other words, if a teacher has a discipline problem, go into a class, observe, 'cause there's wonderful teachers out there, they, they've got a handle on it.
Ms. Dixon, you've been in the classroom much longer than any of us here on this, on this panel, on this board. Um, as you were a teacher, um, was it, did you have to be called a coach for someone to come observe you?
Uh, did I have to be called a coach?
I mean, did any, does any teacher have to be called a coach for a teacher to go observe them?
No, no, absolutely not.
And, and again, and again, I, I, the, the coaches do play a part in the system.
Oh, they do.
And, and having progress, but, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, um, if, if one can be in the classroom all day, then, then I, I think that you could have a lot more gains with students, especially your lowest, most vulnerable students, if they go to someone every day to receive instruction, every day. And you know what? I, I know that, um, that people took a comment that I said and ran with it, but you know what? Again, I stand behind that comment. If you are not in the classroom, if you're not in the classroom, classroom teachers, and you vouch for this, do not even have time to go to the bathroom. They have to make an appointment for someone to come watch your students for them to go to the bathroom. So to me, that is a teacher. If you're out of, if you have the luxury of being out of the classroom, where you can come and go and do as you please, you are, you are a hall walker. I mean, people are saying, "Oh, you're, well, what are you?" If, if you can walk around all day, and, and I'm not saying you're not doing something, I'm not saying that at all, and, and, um, individuals took that and ran with it, um, but I am saying, and you know what? This term wasn't coined by me. When I came on the board in two thousand two, we had a very bold board member who sat here, and that was his term. And you know, at first, I thought, "Well, gracious, that's..." But if you think about it, classroom teachers are in the classroom.
They are, they're, but now, let me go back to the coaching model. That was something that was like in the two thousand three, four, whatever, and it, for the D and F schools.
Right.
I mean, in other words, provide them with in-service modeling, provide them with any support that they needed. And I, I don't wanna diminish the, the position at all, I mean, not, not one bit. But then again, look where we're at. We've got positions that, we need, we have children that need teachers, that, that's where it was coming.
And, and again, I, I just want to make it clear, I wasn't either, and I think that a comment that I made to someone, that person took it and fed it to people to, to pit them against me, and I don't appreciate it, because the, the end of the day, this is the bottom line. I'm here for the students, and when, when we as a board, and when administrators at that school sit there and see students without teachers, it is a disservice to that student. I do not care if they've been dispersed, I do not care. It is a disservice. Like you said, every student in this district deserves opportunity to have a teacher.
They do, and, and it's, I'm going to go back to this poverty thing. These kids need the teachers.
They need stability.
They need stability, and, and, and school is, and it truly is the one stable place for so many of these kids.
If, if, if you go back to back in probably oh-six, Ms. Miller brought Ruby Payne here who spoke on poverty.
I remember.
And, and again, you're absolutely correct, and, and again, I, I, I feel that, but by no means am I against the position of a math coach or reading coach, but, but I do think that we need to be very cognizant of the fact that, what I ask, if, if we're going to have those positions, then they need to be positions in the classroom where individuals are serving a set number of students daily, and, and people can come to them to see what they're doing to be highly effective in the classroom.
And, and not, I mean, they don't, they're not necessarily coached, I can name, and I'm not going to name them, but I can name the out there at Central.
Exemplary teachers.
Teachers that have wonderful classroom, I won't say even discipline, they can manage the classroom, they know how to manage the things, they, which discipline is part of managing. And they, you know, they, they're, they're a world of knowledge, you know, take advantage of them, send the teachers in there, talk to them, and I learn stuff just by going out there and reading stories to the kids.
That, that is, that is where I stand on that. I also agree with you concerning the continuous improvement specialists. Again, I, I, I hear what Dr. Pickles is saying about the legislature, I appreciate that, but again, we need to focus on the here and now, not, not the future that we have no control over.
That is a grant that's about to expire right there.
That is a grant that's going to expire, and, and you know what? I, I heard you the other night saying, well, you agreed to it, you know, even, even if we did agree to it at that point, we were not in the state of financial urgency that we're in right now. And we didn't, we had not gone through what we went through in January. So with all due respect, even, even if we agreed to it, but again, I, I even question that because what I remember, and other board members may correct me, that the times we questioned, the comment was made, well, they would get letters of non-renewal, that they wouldn't have a job. And suddenly it's become, oh, well, you said that it was an agreement. You know what? An agreement's off the table when we're in the state, this financial state that we're in. Do other board members, do you feel that way, Ms. Williamson? Ms. Bell?
I feel like teachers are important.
Well, a, a, again, without the teachers, I don't know how we're going to have school.
We're not going to have school.
I mean, that's the bottom line, and, and at the end of the day, no one knows it until you've been in the classroom, when you cannot go to the restroom, and you cannot have a lunch, and I know that we have duty-free lunch, but the bathroom, the restroom is a huge issue. And I know that because I have students, and this is the only profession I know where you have to make an appointment to go to the restroom.
Yeah.
And, and again, I, 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 those, those are my recommendations at Central. Also, the one-third continuous improvement director, I know that that's a grant that's going out, but again, I want it on the table that it's being cut. That's, that's how I feel concerning that at Central. And, and again, I, I don't, concerning the A P's, and, and looking at the other districts, and I appreciate Dr. Pickles giving that information for us, a lot of other districts or A P's work either ten or eleven months. Also concerning, I, I would like for the deans to be at ten months, I would like for the, the coaches to be at ten months, I would like for the S L P in the district to be at ten months, and if they're needed during the summer to do pre-K, then you can pay them their hourly rate concerning the number of evaluations or contract with someone. This therapist was paid out of general fund, and you could pay, I mean, if you're able to pay out of I D A, then, then someone could be paid out of I D A to do the.
Now, you're talking about which coaches, not the, not the reading.
Reading and, reading and, reading and math, to ten months.
You said to keep them on then, the coaches?
Well, well, no, 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 I'm saying if they're in the classroom.
Oh, oh, if they're, well, if they're, if they're classroom teachers, they are ten months then.
Well, if, if you look at that list, we have teachers who are eleven months.
Well, you, no, you're right, you're right.
So I'm just making it clear, I, I feel that the S L P that's in the district should be moved to ten months, because again, if, the, the, a whole reason they were moved to eleven months was for, to do testing during summer and to, to try to attract therapists. But, but at this point, in, in looking at, in looking at the position and not knowing your like pre-K numbers, again, if, if you have, if you have that need, then you need to contract hourly during the summer, during the summer. It, it, it may would work out if it was, if you're on a lower end of years of experience, but if you have someone on the high end of experience, this will cost you a lot for that extra month. Those, those are the, oh, the other, I have one more. I, I feel that, this is jumping ahead to your outlined schools, but I, I do feel that we need to look at the secretaries at the outlined schools and even at your, your Central School and cut them from twelve months to either eleven and a half or eleven, just to, just to reduce, because again, at, at your, at your outlined schools, and again, I'm not, I'm not, by no means saying that the secretaries aren't valuable, they are valuable, they have a job to do, but with that being said, those are small schools with the maximum enrollment of two hundred kids. They do not have money, when, when summer comes, the school shuts down. So I, I do realize they have a payroll and they may have to do the end-of-year closeout, but again, I, I feel that you could work around that. Mr. Copeland, am I, do you feel that it's possible that they could work around that? To, to flex their time to, to work around where it would be manageable to?
And there's always a possibility that if they absolutely need a few more hours.
Right.
They can come to the board and say, we've got, you know, I mean, that's a possible, it's been done with different ones before.
By, by no means am I saying that at any of these outlined schools, if you're having to do the year-end closeout for the auditors, and you're saying, we cannot get this done, I want them to come to the board and ask for it. But as a board member, I cannot sit here and not try to make, not try to be good stewards of the, the money of the taxpayers after what we've just gone through and after this committee has, has taken their time to make these recommendations. And, and unless I'm daydreaming, recommendations that they made were being, in looking at the overall picture of everything. Is that right or wrong?
I think it's right.
Is that how I interpret it?
I, I think, I think they looked at the whole picture.
I, I, I mean, I do too.
And, and with an eye in the future. I mean, you know, one foot in the present, keep one in the future.
That's, that's all I have on Central and someone.
Did you have anything else for the outlined schools of Lee and Panetta in Greenville other than the secretary moving to eleven?
Well, at, at Greenville, we need to take a hard look at, your principal, I feel, needs to be eleven months. I mean, you have the, the low number of students you have there. I, I, I mean, I, I know that the other schools are, are twelve months, Lee and Panetta's twelve months, they are right there at the two hundred. I, I do think there, there probably is a number we need to come up with that at past this point, you go to eleven months as an outlined principal. I, I can't say tonight what that number is, but based on the fact that our numbers at Greenville is below one hundred and fifty, I, I, this is just me saying, I, I feel that this is our best way. Lead teacher, Dr. Pickle said, could, we could not do, so I feel this is our best way to ensure that Greenville has a principal. It is, it's imperative that they have a principal based on behavior of students, parents, I mean, there, there's no way that you could have, in my understanding of how a lead teacher works would be, that the teacher would teach class during the day, and then during like, I guess, breaks or whatever, she would do administrative stuff. That, that would be very hard to do in this day and time.
In this day and time.
With, with, I mean, you may could have twenty years ago, but in this day and time, you can't. And I, I, I feel that an eleven month would be fair to the school, it would be fair to the principal, the children, and to the district in that we're, we're hopefully being able to operate within the closest we can to them being within their, their set parameters.
Ms. Williamson?
I agree with everything Mr. Alfred has said. Are we going to address the High School?
Yes, ma'am. Can we please turn on the air, please?
Right now, we have what Mr. Stahlneger supplied us with the staffing table and the various cuts or no cuts at the different schools. I don't have a problem with that. It's, they basically looked at the formula and dropped in the numbers, and that's what we came up with. Any other board member input?
Well, Ms. Williamson had asked about the High School.
Oh, okay.
And, and looking back at the list Dr. Pickle's had provided for us in January, the High School did have a receptionist clerk on there, and again, my thought process of at that time, if you're willing to part with this position, then could that be a position that could be eliminated? The other, the other aspect for me is the A P's to eleven months at the High School.
Okay, so you've got instructional and non-instructional on there?
Right.
Okay.
Well, just the non-instructional based upon what, what was recommended to us back in January.
Right. Well, we had many recommendations in January.
But from the High School, those were the, those were the two from the High School, or the one.
Any other, Ms. Williamson?
I think that's all for the High School.
Any other recommendations?
Not for the High School. Are we going to do, move to the district?
Yeah, we can move to the district.
Okay, and, and at Lee and Panetta, we're looking at the secretaries to eleven months if that, and, and again, I, I don't want, I don't want them to think that if they need to do their closeout, that we're not saying that we're not going to supply a few days to do the closeout. But, but what I'm saying is, I, I do think for even your outlined schools, for them to be in their, in their target of what they need to, where they need to be, we need to look at that.
Could I ask for clarification? Were you leaving deans, or did you just want them ten months? Were you adding them to cut? What was, what were you doing with the deans?
I, I cut the deans.
You want to cut the deans?
It was my recommendation to cut.
If, if we're go, I, I mean, if we're go, if we're go cut an A P, we may want to leave at least one dean.
Okay, right now, we've got three A P, you're talking about Central?
Central.
Okay, so right now, we have three A P's. We're going down to two.
So if you have, if you have an A P on one side, an A P on the other, and, and even, even if you did, even if we did a dean, I mean, even if we did one, you, and, and put it on the side that's the most.
With the most challenges, and, and again, we're here to support the teachers. Let's, and, that's the name of the game.
What are the deans right now, Dr. Pickles?
They're, they're ten months. They're instructional, and they're paid, one's paid out of Title One S A I, and the other's paid out of S A I.
Okay.
So, so based upon, based upon our, our cuts or our sheet from January, one was paid out of general fund.
It, it's S A I, it's a categorical. It's our restricted categorical, correct.
Again, again, I go back to, I go back to the, the same argument I keep making is if in, if in January, we were able to make a cut to a dean, then why is it now we can't?
I'm not saying you can't. You asked me how they were paid, it's not.
But, but, but what I'm saying to you and to the whole board is, if, if in, if in January, from January to the end of May, we could have functioned out there with one less dean, then what's saying that we can't this next school year?
I don't see a problem with it. If, if the board, I, I'm all for supporting the teachers, and especially if we're going to eliminate one of the vice principals, then.
I mean, I mean, I, I truly don't have a problem with it if, if we're, if we're eliminating a principal, and, and even if we had a, a dean on the elementary side and middle school side, but, but at, at that point, I don't want to hear anything about we don't have enough help, because, because I would think if we supplied a dean on each side and an A P on each side, you would have adequate help.
I agree with you on that. It's still, it, it still goes back to those teaching position, you know, positions.
And, and again, I'm, I'm comfortable with cutting to having just one dean be between both sides.
Right.
Because, because really, if you look at the numbers and you look at, you compare with other districts, for nine hundred students, you have a principal, two A P's and a dean. That, that is, that is.
That's about where we're at.
That's four people.
Right.
That's four people for nine hundred and, say, a thousand kids.
So we're, we're right there actually with it, just.
So we're cutting, then proposing to cut one dean.
Cut one dean then.
One dean and one A P.
So now we're moving to district level?
I, I had a question. This is going back, and again, I don't know who can answer this. In looking at the, the sheet that Mr. Copeland had provided concerning the, the employees with, with their salary and how many months they were, the, the, I, I know that the band director at the High School is eleven months, which I appreciate that because he has summer band camp to do that if we had to pay him, that we would not come out ahead. But the middle school person is eleven months also, and does he help with that? Or, or how is he eleven months and the kids go home at ten months?
Does anybody?
I mean.
I've spent eleven months since I've been here.
How about?
Mrs. Dixon.
Ms. Dixon, could you speak to that, please? I mean, do, does, does he, does, does your middle school band director help at the High School? Is he eleven months because he's at the High School for?
Me being new and not been here a little summer, I really can't speak with regular knowledge, I do know that he, we have students that march in the High School band, so my assumption is that he would, and he's also here, so he's not been through, you know, a summer before, but my assumption would be if there's band camp in the summer, that we would be going for that.
We need to, we need to have that clarified before, before we go on, I mean, before that's.
Well, we have time.
But, but before that's approved, because, again, the High School band director, I mean, they have supplements and all they give out, and, and if that's part of his duties for that, then, then he should be helping the High School band director out for that. If it's not, then we shouldn't be paying an extra month.
Let's find out about that.
I mean, we need to find out, because it's, that's, that, that's just something that caught my eye whenever I was looking through.
All right, let's take a look at administration.
Or district level?
District level. We've got a couple of, uh, district level people that are paid out of general fund. One is a hundred percent out of general fund, although that may have changed. I know they're taking on different responsibilities. Uh, the human resource, again, I'm not diminishing, demeaning, or disrespecting any position. Sixty percent out of general fund, forty percent Title V. Is, I remember Mr. Elbert, all the years you've been on the board, saying people have to take on different responsibilities. This would not end until July first. This position would stay there till July first.
And those duties would continue, because I still have to have somebody do CTE.
Oh, yeah. It would definitely continue.
The only two positions that are a hundred percent paid out of general funds is our curriculum coordinator and our chief of finance. Everything else is somehow now paid somewhere else because they have picked up additional duties.
Well, I think in a district like ours, with the two thousand wonderful students that we have, they're gonna have to pick up additional duties.
Again, even if, even if we look at it, I, I think that maybe why, why that position is being looked at is that we have an employee that's approaching retirement in the drop. And, um, again, even, even if, even if we carry it out through the drop, I, I feel that, I mean, I, I would be willing to do it through the drop, but no, at that point, then it's going, then, then we need to be prepared as a district that someone's accepting those responsibilities. But because I, I, I don't see how we can, how we, we can continue with a position that, that we, we know that we could save with that, and, and it would be a big savings. No, nothing against the position, but, but it, we, we have combined the position in the past.
And you can do it again.
Well, I agree. I think if we, I think that's fair to, um, try to work through it or absorb it through the time he, he leaves, and then look at, well, the options as far as...
Absorbing the position from the beginning.
Yes, absorbing it from there.
I mean, I, I, I wanna be as fair about this as possible, and I, I truly believe that if someone has done, um, their, um, career with the district, then we need to be respectful of that. And that's what, that's what, as a board, I, I feel like we need to do.
I can go along with that, but I am adamant when that person, when that position retires.
Again, when we make the, when we make the decision tonight, based upon retirement or the drop, end of the drop date, is when the position will be go away.
I, I can go along with that, but we have got to be remembering where we're at, and, and I'm not gonna forget it.
And again, it would give, it would give the district, this is the third month, I, I mean, this is the third month. We have through July, that's four months. Um, you would have through, um, the end of the drop, which I think is another three months, seven or eight months, for the district to prepare.
Prepare, okay.
And, and decide who's gonna accept these responsibilities, and just know that someone needs to start training to accept them, because we're not, we're not gonna extend the position.
I, I think that's fair. I, I think that's fair. It, it is, again, we're talking about positions and not people. It is a long time employee, that, I mean, that, so, we, we wanna respect our employees, but that will be, when it, when it's over, it's over. We'll have to make that perfectly clear.
Right, well, we, we can in the, in the motion, but again, um, I, I go back to, if someone has given their career to the district, by, by no means, we recently had an employee that'd been here twenty-nine years that, that left. By no means should someone feel they have to leave like that, um, when, when they've devoted time to the district. And, and I appreciate the time, I respect the time, and that's why I feel that it's pertinent for us to do it through the end of the drop date. And at that time, the position ends, and, um, just know at that point, then, um, we control the positions, Dr. Pickles, the people, so that is her charge.
That's her.
At that time, to decide who she's gonna delegate the work to, not ours. We're the physicians, she's the people.
I can go along with that, Mr. Alfred.
I, um, I, I also feel that, um, in, in light of, of what this committee has said to us, that, um, we should only have one chief in the district and the rest coordinators.
I agree. Cause remember our two thousand students.
Ri- right. And, and again, at the end of the day, um, all that is, is the title. I mean, all it is, is the title. And at, at the end of the day, um, we, we, we do only have two thousand students, and, um...
And we wanna service them well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, that's, that's my feelings concerning, I don't know how the other board members feel.
That's fine. That sounds good to me.
You're... All right. Again, I've looked at this, these district staffing plans. Most of them are so, have so many, the closest basically is maybe Taylor County with three thousand, and Swanee County with six thousand students, but getting back to...
How many schools does Taylor County have in...
Taylor County?
They have a, um, they have a elementary, a primary, a middle, high school, another elementary in Steen Hatchie, which has like fifty students, and a pre-K.
Are they building another school?
No. Well, they're building a new primaries, or, primary school, but it's, it's not a, it's a school or... It's replacing an older school.
So they have seven? Eight.
All right, so we've talked about the deans. We decided we'd keep one dean at Central. Eliminate the coaches, eliminate the continuous improvement specialist. The human resource position will be eliminated in October. ESC, we've, I've looked at these district staffing plans, and like I said, most of the schools have three, four, or fifty times more students than we have. And they're operating on, with less people in that department than we are. I don't know, go ahead and put...
How many staffing specialists do we have?
We have five, I think, don't we, right now?
Dr. Pickles?
Yes, five.
Five? Okay, we have five.
Cause I know Swanee has three.
And they've got six thousand kids.
They have, well, it's not about the population of the children, it's about ESC population.
Well, how many, right.
They have nine hundred and forty ESC children.
Nine hundred and forty ESC, okay.
We have four hundred and sixty by the DOE side.
So see, this is what I'm talking about, you know, it's like, why?
So, so Dr. Pickles, you're saying we have five?
We have five.
But you have to think about what they do. One services both our high schools, one, because they're servicing our charter schools. Our charter schools do not have a dedicated ESC staffing specialist. Our staffing specialists go to those schools and service those children.
Like what Mr. Williams said, we need to look at what their exceptionality is and what they're having to do, because if you're just speech or language impaired, the staffing on that's a lot different than if you're a two fifty-five, requiring extensive, um, extensive, um, meetings and a lot of, a lot of, um, follow-up and follow-through.
Now, I think they've got about, uh, maybe two, three different secretaries that are involved in this, too?
They have one at Central, one at the high school, and one in the district office.
Okay, so three, okay.
And one part-time.
Board members, how do you feel about that?
You're referring to ESC, correct? Yes.
It seems like a lot. I talked to Mr. Boatright in Swanee County, and they have a director, one secretary, three staffing specialists for their nine hundred and sixty kids.
Almost a thousand though, in there.
And that's not count, and they did not add their gifted kids into that number of ESC. They're not added.
Oh, they're not, okay. So it's over a thousand probably, then?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Dr. Pickles, do you have, do you have verbal recommendations from the gentleman who came from the district, for the...
Not as far as what he recommended changing. No, I do not. We played phone tag.
But, but at any point, did he say that we were overstaffed?
He said he had changes to suggest to me, and he would give me a report.
What is the holdup with this person?
We've played some phone tag, and he's working in other districts.
Can he send you a, you know, send you a something, recommendations?
I told him I would call him at the time. We were having two and three board meetings a week.
Right.
And I just have not called him back, and I have made a phone call.
Madam Chairman, could you please, um, instruct the attorney to maybe contact the gentleman who's done this report and ask that the, that, that the board is requesting the report?
Mr. Reeves?
Sure, I need the name and account number.
I will be happy to give it to you.
Um, but, but because at some point, this has been going on since October.
This, and I...
No, this one has not. This one did not start until January.
But, but in October, we request, I requested that, I wanted someone to come in to review everything.
Okay, but this one did not start then. So, just to clarify, that one, I did not get that one scheduled then.
Excuse me, excuse me. He was here, if I'm not mistaken, before Christmas, because we thought we were gonna get the report before Christmas break. And he went on a cruise, you said?
He met with me. He did not meet with any staff until January.
Okay, I think on our, January fourth, the meeting that we had to discuss the fiscal, you, Dr. Pickles mentioned the report, we didn't see it. I mean, she, she gave us, I think, some information about it. I took some notes, as a matter of fact. And, but I, that's January fourth.
Right.
And we're already at March eighteenth right now, so we're...
When, uh, uh...
Actually, he came January tenth, and then he came back a second time.
When was his last visit here?
That's what I'm trying to look. It's either the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first.
I, I don't know how, in other words, he came here, he's interacted with our people, but nothing...
Uh, I, I remember in January, the excuse being given, that he was on a cruise.
I, I remember him being on a cruise.
So I, I, I don't know why we don't, I mean, again, that, that's either here or there. We, we need to request, we, we're requesting the information, and he needs to provide it as soon as possible.
I think so, too.
I think, but I think we should go ahead and look at, I mean, our county cannot be so much different than everybody else. Gilchrist, five hundred and twenty-nine ESC students with three staffing specialists. Calhoun, four hundred and forty-nine with two staffing specialists. Taylor, um, excuse me. Swanee with nine hundred and forty-six with three. Don't think we need five. I think we can do with three.
I don't, I don't know...
I don't see that Swanee, that we can have so many much more different problems than every one of these other districts.
I, one, one thing, and, and again, going back to what Mr. Williams had said, um, I don't know in Swanee that they may not have, um, like, for instance, for all, like, the speech therapists, they do their own meetings. The staffing specialist, I think, set it up, but the therapist handle the meeting. Um, I, I think that may be going on some there, but again, if it's working there, then, I mean, again, Swanee is doing a great job financially.
They're, they have an eight to ten percent fund balance. So evidently, they, they know how to handle their money there, and their positions.
I, I mean, I just wanted to put that on the table, that I think that maybe that's happening some there with why they're...
Yeah.
Why they have such a large number in, um, the three. But again, um, I mean, Gilchrist, Gilchrist and the other one you said would be, that's, that's even more than what we have, and yours, I mean, they're saying three, or one said three, the other one said two. What was the other one you said besides Calhoun?
With our population compared to the other populations, I'd say that two staffing specialists would be good here. Or do you think we could do less?
I, I, I mean, I, how many are you, how many do we have here in ESC?
Four hundred and some?
Sixty, four sixty.
Four, four sixty?
I mean, if, if you're saying that we have five right now...
We have five right now.
Three, I mean, three would be a number that I, I mean, I would think we would be, we would be fair, and I would feel comfortable with that. Um, we, we also, I mean, I, I do know that, um, in, in looking at the people who, um, the helpers that they have, when, whenever that came about, um, there's always been the one secretary who works, um, in the office. And then, um, back probably in ninety-eight, when Ms. Hubbard was my staffing specialist, we had a tech that, or not a tech, excuse me, a parapro that, um, was, was my assistant, but her assistant, when she wasn't working with me, and that's when that came about, and correct me if I'm wrong, it came about due to, um, at that time, teachers did not have common planning periods for the IEP meetings. And we had to pull teachers out of the classroom to come to the meeting, and the person went down to cover the class as the person, as the teacher came to the meeting. That's why that all came about with Ms. Spinnaman back in ninety-eight, is that she put people in to cover the classes. Now that you have the common planning, and I assume, um, at Central, is Central common planning period? Or all the schools? I mean, I, I, I don't know that now you would be faced with that. And again, not taking anything against what the, the clerks do that help the staffing specialists, because it is a big help. I'm sure they, um, schedule the meetings and set it up with the parents and all that. I know it's a big help, but, uh, again, in looking at where it initiated back in ninety-eight or ninety-seven, it was four to cover the classroom when the teacher came for the IEP meeting. And, and today, I think, in most schools, the staffing specialist does a good job of, I can't speak for this district, but the district I work in, the, the, the meeting is scheduled during the teacher's planning time, is when the teacher comes. When this, her class is at enrichment or his class, the teacher comes to the meeting. And, um, uh, uh, again, I, I, I think that, I, I wanna be fair to them, and, and I don't want to, like, pull them, I mean, again, you do have to have one that's in the office doing what the central office, making sure all the testing and all that comes in. You have to have one for that. Um, that is one that you have to have. Now, the others, um, I do think is, I, I, I would say that, in being fair to them, I would say that, um, one is, um, would be fair to leave them one instead of pulling all of them out. And, and I, and I don't know what the half-person does, whether it's specific where other people maybe do not do. If, in, in saying that, I, I do know that, um, that individual did some specific stuff when I worked in Jefferson County, if that's the same person that I'm, and, and again, I, I don't know what their role is here that maybe someone else couldn't do, and, and trying to be as fair about this as we can.
So how many are there now?
There is, there is one in the White House.
There's one, there's one, there's one, there's one twelve-month secretary, two ten-month clerks. One at the Central and one at the high school, or are they eleven-month clerks?
Well, they, they...
Receptionist clerks.
They, they may be down as ten, but they, each year, it comes back for us for another
The, the... We got a secretary, ESC half-term, and a clerk.
The ESC are, they're ten-month receptionist clerk, one's at Central, one's at the high school, and then the one part-time is only twenty hours, and she's here.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, um, that the receptionist clerk at the high school and Central is somewhat misleading, because... Right. But, but what I'm saying is that the receptionist clerk at the high school and Central is somewhat misleading, because I can't speak for both, but one normally comes back for additional hours during the summer, which boosts it up to to a higher, but that, that's neither here nor there. One, one secretary is here at the county office, which, again, I feel is imperative to make sure that you're testing. All that is in, because you have so many days to have the testing, setting it up with a psychologist who's gonna do it. And, and again, I'm not saying that the clerks out in the outline schools are not as, as important, but I'm saying that in looking at this big picture, and looking at the recommendations that have been made from this committee, we're trying to look at all departments fairly and equitably, and, and this is.
And I think we are being fair.
I, I, I mean, I, I do think the, the 20, the 20 hours a month, I, I suspect that is something very specific that.
20 hours per week.
Per week. But again, I, I suspect that it is something.
She has a specific job, a specific.
And, and again, not saying that the others don't, but I, I, I would think that it would be.
So we're proposing to cut the secretaries to one. Is that what we're doing?
Well, not secretary. I think they're classified as a clerk.
Clerks.
A clerk or receptionist. I think that's what it's.
It's a 10-month receptionist clerk, one's at Central, one's at the high school. And they do go in the classroom.
So the one that's staying is gonna be 10, 11, or 12 months?
It should be 10, because that's what they are now.
And, and there's no children there during the summer, but I'm just service, so.
So that's cutting how many?
That, that would be one receptionist clerk.
Yeah, there's.
You're cut, we're cutting one or cutting two one?
You're cutting, you're cutting, you're cutting one. It would still have a part-time, so they would have, they would have one point, instead of 2.5, it would be 1.5. Or I don't know that the 20 would be a five. I guess that would be a five, because 30 would have to be a whole. Does, I mean, does anyone feel that it should be more? I mean, I.
I think, considering how many students we have and comparing to other districts, I think that's very fair.
I mean, I, I, I think we're being fair about it. I mean, it's not gonna be liked. A, a, again.
Sometimes what we think is a necessity in life is not a necessity in life.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, I, I think that, I think that we're sitting here having to make these decisions based on information that, that we've had to research. This is, this is not, and, and I, I would be interested to see the report once we get it, to see how close we are to the decisions we've made, because, I mean, Ms. Williamson has, has researched, she sat here tonight calling Swanee County and Gilcrest and Calhoun on, on her own researching this. So, again, I mean, I, I think this is a decision that we've made due to information that, that a board member has fact-finded, and, and information that we've gone on DOE's website to, to gather. A, a, again, it's, it's.
Any more discussion? Doctor.
You don't need to repeat all that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, I think Dr. Pickles is taking notes on all this.
I think I have them.
Would you repeat them, please?
Are you finished with the ones at the district?
Yes, we said that we would continue with it until October.
Or to the end of the drop, whenever the drop ends.
The end of the drop, whenever that is.
No, I said, are you finished with all the ones at the district? Because if you're going back to the list, there were others, there were even others listed.
Are you ready to do recap, recap, or do you?
I'm, I'm ready for recap.
Let's do a recap for now, yeah.
Alright, at Central, we have one guidance counselor and Miss Bishop, if you'll make sure I have all of these. Two receptionist clerk, one guidance secretary, and one AP. In addition, all APs, high school and Central, will be cut to 11 months. Cut the part-time secretary, cut the, cut one dean, and then the dean position will be cut to 10 months, we'll make sure it's 10 months. Cut the coaches, they will only be in the classroom, so no other coaches. At the high school, cut one receptionist clerk. Again, that, that AP will be 11 months. At Lee, Greenville, and Pinetta, the secretary will go to an 11-month position. Greenville, the principal, be 11 months. And then at Lee and Pinetta, we're keeping that one 12 months for now. At the district, cut the continuous improvement specialist, because it's technically under the district. Cut the SIG director, and then make sure we have to address the SLP and exactly where they're paid. Do you want to cut that? Do you just want me to address that? Because I just wrote to address.
I would like it to be to 10 months, and then they're paid.
And I did have 10 months.
That, that they're, the position shouldn't be cut, they should be cut to 10 months.
Alright, cut to 10 months and question how it was paid.
And if, if they need additional hours to test pre-K in the summer, then you come back to the board at that time and request additional hours.
Okay. The director, all positions should be coordinators with the exception of the, we should only have one chief, which I'm assuming you're referring to our chief, our CFO. We should only have three staffing specialists. As far as ESC, then we should also only have the, we should cut one of the receptionist clerks. Because that was where I had the other cut.
Thank you, Dr. Pickles.
Am I missing anything?
If you could please check on the music teacher, that's 11 months.
Well, I do have clarify, but that's not in this whole list. The MCSS band, but that, that wasn't in my cut list. Bless you.
I, I think what you're wanting to do is make all of these changes effective July 1. And so, I think with the motion, you could say, so moved, as recited by the superintendent, effective July 1. And then with the human resources director, then you would make that effective, you, you need a date, and you can say effective that date, that position's being cut. So if you wanted to stretch that out past drop, you just need to know that date and say it's effective. We're cutting that position effective that day. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do we know the date?
October 31st.
October 31st.
I'd cut it effective November 1.
November 1st, okay.
And then everything else would be July 1.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the staffing cuts and personnel recommendations? Human resources would end on July, November 1st, 2019.
I make the motion to approve this, changes, all of them, effective July 1st, except the human resource of November 1st.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Williamson, second.
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Alfred. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Becky for one.
Right. And Madam Chairman, I think you still need to approve the instructional staff table that Mr. Stollnacker.
Oh, I, okay, I was kind of including that, that's okay. That's good. Is there a motion to approve the instructional staff cuts given to us by Mr. Stollnacker?
Again, effective July 1.
Effective July 1.
I make the motion to approve the instructional staff cuts, effective July the 1st.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? 5-0, Becky. Superintendent items, Dr. Pickles?
There's none at this time.
Mr. Reeves?
Ma'am, unless you have questions.
Ms. Williamson? Ms. Bell? Mr. Alfred?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Daniels? Alright. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Mr. Daniels. Meeting is adjourned.